Call to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have a hearing for a jitney license denial. Is anybody here in reference to that?
Okay, we'll just let the record reflect that Mr. Caduce did not appear.
Moving on, do we have any communications?
No.
We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Bob Charmella, 240 105th Street. I am here as a representative and president of the Stone Harbor Properties Owners Association, and I would like to inform the council of our findings of the survey that we recently have conducted regarding the parking meters. I know it's been sort of a controversial topic, and I really felt that we, as an organization, should have some input into, just so that the council is aware of where we are headed and where we are looking. It was a pretty simple survey. It was two questions, and then we enlisted comments by our members. First question, and I should point out that we had a total of 643 responses to our survey. That constitutes 75% of our membership, so I think it's a pretty good hit ratio. And on question three, where we solicited comments, we had 436 responses, which constitutes about 50%, a little bit more than 50% of the entire membership, had the presence of mind to make comments on, and suggestions perhaps is probably a better term to use. Question number one in the survey, and you as probably some council members, as members have seen the survey, question number one was, should parking meter charges extend beyond the May to September time period? That answer was yes, 13% of the time, and no, 87% of the time. So it was pretty clear to us that our members were not altogether happy with the extension of the parking meters for the, what I term, for lack of a better term, the off-season. Should parking meters be discontinued entirely in Stone Harbor? This was just kind of an out there question that we just thought we'd get an answer from, and the answer was yes, they should be discontinued, but only 36% said yes. Another 64% said that they should be continued during the summer season. And then we asked for alternative parking solutions, and as I pointed out, we had 436 responses. They ran the gamut. Some were a little, I guess you could call flippant. Others were quite serious and quite, I think, thought provoking. What I'll do, to be brief, is just highlight the most, the questions that were, the question that was raised, highlight the most repetitive answers that we got from the membership. And the first most frequent answer and suggestion we had was a time limit on downtown parking during the time that the parking meters are in force. There were some suggestions for two hours, three hours. It pretty much ran the gamut up to four hours, but for the most part, the predominant number was a two-hour parking limit on the existing parking meters. The second most important subject and most important comment was made was the building of a parking garage, which was somewhat surprising to me, but there were a lot of people, I'd say upwards of 25 to 30, who said that a parking garage, not real, there's not a lot of specificity as to where. There were some suggestions to have the parking lot on 97th Street between the Reed's parking lot and to have something in a building format there, or alternatively on Second Avenue at 94th Street, where we have free parking right now. Third was provide resident parking permits, which was another surprise to me. I sense that that's probably coming from residents who live closer to town, but some people said they would actually pay to have a resident parking permit to allow them to park in town, either at a parking lot or at a parking space during the summer months. That probably needs to be worked on a little bit, just how we could see that could work. Another suggestion was making municipal parks available and free to employees who work in town. That would counteract the criticism that the chamber has had, as I understand it, that their own employees have a habit of parking in front of their own stores. Personally, I think that's something that the employer and the employee should work out and not make a big deal about it, but nevertheless, that was one of their complaints. One of the other comments was, variable comments, was having parking spaces available at St. Paul's Church. As I understand it, we had a very short conversation with Ray just before this meeting, and he tells me that's being done right now, and I was thinking it would be a good opportunity for the church to make a few dollars, but maybe that's not even necessary, but that's an option for people who have to, need to park in town. And the last frequent comment that I had was encourage the merchants to insist that employees not park near the stores. Seems like kind of a pretty in-your-face type of thing that everybody would, you'd think the employers would consider that, but apparently it's not since the employees are parking there. There was also a request for more bike racks and more golf cart parking spaces, which I thought was a pretty reasonable request. So that, in a nutshell, is we got a very favorable, got a very high response from our members, which is not surprising because we tried to couch them in a form where it's easy for them to answer and allow them some leeway to make any comments what they have. And I must admit, I was really heartened by the number of comments we had and some of the seriousness of some of the comments. I'd love to share some of the funnier ones, but in the interest of time, I will stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sure, and just let me, just so council knows, I did introduce Bob to Paul Kate, and he's going to share those survey results with Paul, which is something that then can be shared and discussed and continue in the master plan review, but sure.
I thank you for all your comments. I just want to reiterate a few things. The 97th Street parking, we looked at probably three years ago.
I recall.
We had such a backlash from the neighbors that backed up there that it was kind of withdrawn. These are things that certainly can be looked at again, but I just want to give you a little history. On the resident parking permits, we do have that. We have the lot down at Merkel. You can buy a permit if you want to for the whole summer. You can buy a permit.
I think they're thinking free.
Oh.
Well, there was a, it was a mixed, it was a mixed message. Some were willing to pay and others wanted it free.
Okay.
And then the 95th Street parking lot, you know, is free after seven o'clock. They just have to walk a few blocks. And St. Paul's Church, we also, I was a big advocate of talking to Monsignor Quinn and their staff, probably again three years ago. They had no interest whatsoever in ever using that lot for parking other than church parking. So again, these can all be addressed again. We're in consensus, most of us, I believe, here, that the employers should monitor their employees, and we have a second-hand lot where they can walk a block and a half and park their car for free. That's a free lot. So there are options, but everything you said is very valuable and certainly should be looked at again.
I thank you for your comment about walking, because I just want to, I didn't want to do this, but I want to share one quote, and it's verbatim from the comments that were made by some of our members. He or she said, "It's not a parking problem, it's a people problem. There is adequate parking in Stone Harbor, but too many people feel that parking a couple of blocks away from their destination and having to walk is a sign of a parking problem. It's a lazy or inconsiderate people problem." End quote. So that, I thought that was a very interesting quote, and I wanted to share that if I had an opportunity, but we got some very, you know, some very good quotes from our members about, but I thought that one was very telling.
Do you have a percentage of homeowners that live here all year on this survey?
We did. It was, yeah, we did. It was, the number of homeowners who live here year-round was 16%, which is consistent, I think, with the demographic of the town.
Right.
Yeah, sorry.
So we did, we did get a pretty good response from the full-time residents.
Real quick, the last two comments, I think, are, they just captured me for a minute here, the golf carts and the bike racks. I think we discussed this in the master plan subcommittee at some point, and the fact that perhaps golf cart parking spaces could allow for significantly more parking downtown of vehicles, I forget if Paul's here, but what the spatial requirements are for a golf cart versus a standard vehicle. I know we discussed it at some length, but I would be a big proponent of looking into that. And then, as always, bike racks, the more you can foster people to get downtown, closer to town, and have adequate space for their bikes.
Well, I know we have our meetings, as you know, at the movie theater every spring and fall, and it's amazing that I come as early as seven o'clock for that meeting, and, you know, I either have to park my bike against a parking meter or someplace else. There's literally very few. There's some back at the back of one of the shopping malls, but there's very few around town. I know there's one across the street from the police station and right by the police station, but other than that, there are very few. That really should be seriously considered.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Okay.
Anyone else we'd like to address, mayor and council?
Frank Dallowen, 378 95th Street in Stone Harbor, and I too came up to present my opinion of the parking meter situation. First off, I think the optics of increasing the parking rates in Stone Harbor is very bad. It's bad because we have just gone through a revaluation of the property, and everybody has just gotten their taxes for the balance of this year and next year. And I dare say that everybody who lives in town has seen a significant tax increase. So adding to the burden of living in Stone Harbor, if you can call it a burden, of raising the parking meter rates to year-round, I don't think makes good sense. I think it's a very bad picture to present to the population here. Secondly, I'm gathering that this is, the desire to have parking on a year-round basis is stemming from employee use of parking spaces here in town. And whether it's a question of lazy employees or what, I don't think that's adequate justification for making parking on a year-round basis a good idea. So I would urge council to seriously consider these points and not to move forward on increasing the parking meter rates. I'm kind of surprised that none of the merchants are here, because the last time the question of parking meter rates was addressed, I think every merchant in town appeared and spoke at the council meeting. Every single one of them was opposed to raising it from whatever it was to whatever it is now, so.
They're having a special meeting on Thursday at nine o'clock that I'll be attending. So I think that's why they're all going to be there at that time.
Okay.
Are you inferring raising the rates as far as it's 15 minutes for 25 cents? We're not talking about that.
No.
No, it's extending.
Gotcha, all right. I just didn't want to misunderstand what you were saying.
No, that was my entire point.
Yes, the merchants are being quite vocal.
I'm not surprised. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address mayor and council?
Good evening. I'm George Kaiser. I'm 358 95th Street for the past 40 years. Excuse me, I've had some dental work, so I might not be real clear. I had a few items. One is, I was surprised and happy with the hours you put on construction in the summertime. We have a construction down the road from, down the street from us, and it's been very helpful. I had a second suggestion for summertime, and that would be banning 16-wheelers from delivering goods into Stone Harbor in the summer, in our season. I almost got clipped by a Budweiser vehicle two days ago. Had to move over very quickly. And I've seen, since I've been there 40 years, I've seen Fred's in and outs, and as one example that I see a lot, and they have panel trucks. They don't, Budweiser comes in small trucks and Budweiser comes in big trucks. So I don't think it would be a burden on them to, in the summertime, to say, no, we're not going to let you bring them on island here. So I just, you know, in your master planning or whatever, I would hope you'd give that some consideration. The second thing is, I just want to recognize Public Works. Been here 40 years, my garbage collection's actually gotten better. People are friendlier. They take, they take everything. If some, I rent half my house, so if, you know, if something wasn't done exactly right, they don't care. They pick it up and they adjust it and they take it. It wasn't that way when I first moved into Stone Harbor, so thanks a lot for that. The other thing I wanted to do was a brief, brief comment on parking, as you consider all the alternatives. I think, and I spoke one time before, about a year ago on this, I think you got to give added consideration to the streets and the nearby streets near downtown. If you kept, if you kept everything status quo, those streets probably could use some relief in some way. And that's where I think the resident parking could come in. I was interested to hear that we had a resident parking pass. I didn't know we had one.
We have a permit that you have to, it's not a pass, it's a permit you have to purchase for the summer.
That's fine. I could park on the, I could have a spot on my street.
No, not on the street. It's only in certain parking lots.
Oh, okay, okay. But, you know, I think maybe, it's not just my street, I'm sure it's other streets, you should consider some kind of maybe resident pass for them, where maybe they have one, you know, one spot on the street or something. It isn't bad, you know, parking when you're just, when you're just looking for a spot, you know, I know what time to go out at night, you know? Or after one, the Pancake House opens up, so that's one time. Eleven o'clock at night, Fred's help empties out, and the Reed's empties out, so I can go find a spot, you know, if I want it. And the other, other pain in the neck is when you come around and it's crowded, and it isn't just a parking spot. You've got your grandkids, or you've got, you know, you've got a load full of stuff you have to unload. That's when it's kind of annoying, if you would. But so, just please give extra consideration to the streets close by. I'm not opposed to the parking downtown. That makes all the sense in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Ashman, 10301 First Avenue. Just a few comments, or single comment on a single subject, the parking. One, I would urge council not to extend the parking meters in the off-season. As I understand it, from reading and talking to a lot of you, the concern that brought this to an issue was the merchants saying they had no spaces for their customers to park in front of their stores, okay? The solution to that problem is not the town. The solution to that problem is the merchants and their employees. And as Frank or somebody suggested, they ought to suggest to them, I say they ought to mandate that. If you're going to work for me and you're taking up a spot for my customers, you can't do that. That's the solution. The solution isn't to put that onto the taxpayers or the visitors that come in here. That's what I would recommend you really consider, and not increase the parking during the off-season. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
Can I speak from here? I'm having more trouble with these charges than you can imagine. I just broke my leg and got a really sore leg.
Carrie, you okay? Okay.
Is that all right?
Yep.
My name's Hal Jones, I live in South Dakota, New Jersey, and I'm here to speak in favor of the public debate.
Okay. No, we're going to actually have a public hearing on that ordinance coming up next, so that would be the appropriate time to speak, okay? And we'll let you speak from there then, too. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Closing public comment, ordinance 1524.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1524 be taken up on second reading. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1524 on second reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 466, solid waste recycling dumping by adding a new article pertaining to environmentally acceptable packaging and product.
The public hearing on ordinance 1524 is open. Thank you. Could you please spell your last name?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1524 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading. Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1524 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 466, solid waste.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1524 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law. Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Ordinance 1525.
Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1525 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1525 on second reading?
An ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, County of Cape May, New Jersey, establishing uniform regulations for construction and repair of bulkheads.
The public hearing on ordinance 1525 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1525 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1525 on third and final reading?
An ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, County of Cape May, New Jersey, establishing uniform regulations for construction and repair of bulkheads.
Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1525 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Ordinance 1526.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1526 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1526 on second reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 560, the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Stone Harbor regulating pools on bayfront properties.
The public hearing on ordinance 1526 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1526 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1526 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 560, the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Stone Harbor regulating pools on bayfront properties.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1526 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
That was a yes. Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 149.
May I offer resolution 2018 dash S dash 149 for adoption?
Second.
This is to appoint Judge Birchmire to a term of three years.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 150.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2018 S. 150 for adoption. Second. This is to extend the grace period for taxes for this quarter to August 20th.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 151.
I offer resolution 2018 S. 151 for adoption. This is an insertion of $1,500 into our budget as a special item revenue.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 152.
May I offer resolution 2018 dash S dash 152 for adoption?
Second.
This is a change order to the construction contract for the police building, decreases the amount of one deliverable by $1,271.36.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 153.
I'd like to offer 2018 S. 153 for adoption. Second. This is a refund for an overpayment to Verizon, New Jersey, Inc., and the amount is $856.06.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S. 154.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution number 2018 dash S dash 154 for adoption.
Second.
This is to approve a development of a purchase order for furnishings for the new police building. It's in the amount of $59,577, and it's being purchased on a state contract.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen S one fifty-five.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand eighteen S dash one fifty-five for adoption.
Second.
Um, I have a question after you're done.
Uh, this, this, uh, refund, this is a refund of a permit fee for a Hobie cap slip in which, um, the, um, applicant would like to have stored two kayaks but is no longer allowed to do so, and is therefore asking for a refund.
Any discussion?
Well, my, my question was, I never knew that we were allowed to rent them for kayaks.
You weren't.
We're not.
But then why did, did somebody do it and pay for it?
Because I think my guess is they got the permit, they put the kayaks there, and somebody said, "You can't put them there." And they said, "Wow, if we can't put these here, we don't want it because we don't have a Hobie cap." That's my guess.
I think the changes we made to that agreement stipulated exactly what you can have in kayaks.
That's enforcement of, right.
Right, that's what I'm guessing is what happened.
So I always thought it had to be a cra- a sale craft that had a New Jersey permit to be a sale craft was part of the application. Oh, look at you.